I do have twins. Oh, your dad's meeting was tonight, right? Did it go okay? Where is Adrian? Did it go okay? Awesome. Thanks, you guys.
I go to death.
I go to bad.
Yeah. He's like, whoa. Why does she not? I'm just being really... That's all right. My sister, my mom's sister has something that's case my... And my pictures are all... Me and me. My mom's sister did that. Somebody said, "Not very nice." Are you... All right, guys, rest position. Let's take a family picture quick, y'all. Family picture. Family picture. Do it. Family picture. Okay, not in the middle of the... I'm quick. Do you want to take a picture? No, 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 no. Hey, yeah.
She got one.
I got one. No, wait.
It is our fault.
I'd say... What? Smiling. Smiling, you look so helpful. You've got to smile. Yeah. Okay, where's William? I said...
What? I must say less. Where's William?
You've got a nice rap, though. He's probably... Your family's on a trip. You've got to be a nice guy. My sister got a portrait of him. Oh, Harvey loves him. Harvey loves him. Sorry. Hey, but you're so sad. I do like the black on stage. I think it looks nice. So, eighth grader's group, we're all black for the concert, you know. All black. All black. But you're wearing black. What?
Wait, what do the... I think it's white and brown.
I'm still thinking about that one. I haven't quite decided.
Yeah, because are we... Yeah, I'll just have a white sweater and then take it off.
Wow. Next, you go. How do you come up with four of you? Those right here. Too late. You're fine.
Well, this girl would go. Yeah.
Oh, Shaylin. Hi, Shaylin. How are you? They were all talking about you. Oh, all right, can't get any conversation. Everybody raised wet? Yes?
Ready for tonight?
And here's the now brass player. Excuse me, your condensation keys. Your condensation keys. Don't I go on my clothes so close? Your condensation keys. And I like your...
Whenever you're gonna really take it out. I can do an act of that.
All right, shh, shh, shh. That's great. Go on. Go on.
Thank you so much.
How are you doing the money part?
I don't know. It's so hard to look at. I think some... Yep, that's just one thing, though.
One more time. Junior. Not GR, not JR. Junior, J. JR. JR.
It's gonna be too much to like...
No. All right, well, I'm gonna need them tonight because I have to give them to Ex. So, can I just follow you home or something?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll just follow you home.
Where's the French horn?
Okay. No, French horn's in there, I'm sorry. I know, sad. But I think I bear from my...
All right, cool.
Got it, yeah. Represent. Sorry about that.
Jen, did you get the answers to what's... The extra question? We should... She got a lot of... Not a problem. We'll get it soon. We asked first thing this morning. So, disappointed I didn't have the answers.
All right, everybody ready? Nope, not quite. Good evening. That was louder than I intended. A call to order. The April 29th meeting of the Metatchen Board of Education will rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Aliyevich, notice of the meeting, please.
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975, which became effective 90 days after enactment, January 19th, 1976. Notice that this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices, by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, the Star Ledger, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk as prescribed by this law.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Derslinger.
He is advised he will not be present today.
Thank you. Mr. Glassberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
I am here.
Okay. Good to see you. Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Lipton.
He is also advised he will not be here this evening.
All right, thank you. Ms. Thresha sent me an email saying she would not be here this evening. Dr. Spigner.
Here.
Mr. Suss.
Here.
Thank you so much. Dr. Caputo, we have a showcase of success.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Johnson Marcus. We have two showcases in a little bit. We'll introduce several of our newest hires publicly. We're really excited that they could make the trip out tonight. But first, we have the Edgar Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Robin Keys. It's a combination of band students from grades seven and eight. Tonight, you'll hear Arabian Dances by Roland Barrett. This piece is a celebration of life set around the fire in the desert in which nomads set up camp after a long day's journey to sing and dance. The Wind Ensemble has been working on this piece in preparation for the Spring Band Concert, May 14th, 7 o'clock, right here at Metatchen High School. Ms. Keys.
Thank you. Parents, guardians, everything else. Thank you for supporting the arts of Metatchen. It really, truly means a lot to me. I started as a fourth grade student long ago. Well, not that long ago. And I'm a low brass player by trade. So, I try to bring a celebration of love and life and music. That was kind of my theme for this year, since we are five years past COVID. So, that is a celebration of life. And if you come to the May 14th concert, you will hear such beautiful music that the kids have really worked hard on. So, this is kind of a trailer for that. So, enjoy. Arabian dances. Thank you, guys, for coming, and thank you for supporting the arts in Metatchen. Thank you, guys. You guys ready?
Shock. Stand.
Yes, yes, yes.
All the new brass, yeah. Okay. Just stand back so that... If you're not gonna rush, polite. Just like Edgar, flip them over and stand there to the back, girl, okay?
Wind Ensemble, awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Awesome work.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing New Jersey for you.
Dr. Johnson Marcus, don't you want to let them know that there's more meeting after this?
No, I don't. Have a good night. Thank you for joining us. All right. That was excellent.
That's perfect.
I see that these parents are well-versed in how it operates around here. You come, you see your child, you cheer them on, and you use the breakdown time to make your getaway.
Brendan. So, you have to wait that you took this one? Please. Ask if I can introduce the new teachers. My cousin won't actually come to the podium. I thought you had Sarah.
Thank you, Alan.
Do this really quickly.
Yes, sir. Yep, screen's coming down. Good job, Alan. Thank you.
I think we're set, Dr. Johnson Marcus.
All right. And back to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Caputo.
Very good. So, the second part of our showcase of success. Mrs. Taylor, Coach Taylor, off a big win, has brought with her tonight five of our newest hires. And I really thank... I'm thankful for them, for being able to come tonight with their, it looks like, some family members as well. So, what I'm gonna do is I'll introduce you. You're all kind of close to the podium, which is fantastic. I'll invite you up to the podium, and you can say as little as two words of thank you or tell us, even better, tell us a little about yourself and why you're excited to be here. Board really appreciates, and the public, a chance to meet the newest hires, and thank you again for coming out tonight. So, we'll start with our new Campbell's second-grade teacher, Willow Brown. Hi, Willow.
Hello, everyone. My name is Willow Brown, and I'm very excited to be joining the team at Campbell School as a second-grade teacher the upcoming year. One of the things that brought me to this role was Metatchen's strong dedication for whole-child growth and the amazing community. It's truly an honor to be joining such a dedicated team of educators, and I'm so excited to get to contribute to the amazing work being done there. Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willow. We're happy to have you. Next up is our Student Assistant Counselor, Leave Replacement, Kristi Marietta.
Good evening, Dr. Caputo and the board. My name's Kristi Marietta, and I am very excited for this opportunity. I was a former teacher, a school counselor, and now filling in for Samantha Palermo as the Student Assistant Coordinator for the district. I'm looking forward to bringing my knowledge and experiences in the mental health field to the staff and students here at the Metatchen Public Schools. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
One of our new Moss Full Day kindergarten teachers, Danielle Pallata.
Good evening. How was everybody tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good, I'm good. I'm excited to be part of the new Moss school, and especially that it's going full-day kindergarten. I know everyone is very excited about that. I'm a Metatchen resident for over 20 years, and I'm happy to be here. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New next-year Campbell for first grade, Emily Vanderhoff.
Hello. I'm Emily Vanderhoff. I've been a teacher for 12 years, and I'm excited to continue my career here at a district who values character education just as much as I do. I do want to say that throughout the entire interview and onboarding process, everyone has been exceptionally welcoming, kind, and I felt comfortable the second I walked in. I appreciate the warm reception and this opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
And finally tonight, our new Moss School Counselor, which we're very excited about, the position and the person, Danielle Wright.
Thank you very much, Dr. Caputo and the board. It's wonderful to see you all, meet you in person. My name is Danielle Wright, and I have been a school counselor in Somerset County for the last four years. Started working with elementary students in 2009, so it's my bread and butter. And I'm really excited to be able to join the team at Moss and especially to join a community that seems so dedicated to the growth and well-being of students. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Excellent, welcome.
That's it?
All right.
So, you want to just take a pause, they can stay, or whatever they want, but...
As evidenced by the parents earlier, you may leave if you wish during this interregnum period because while I promise our budget hearing will be amazing, I understand if you want to get home and get a good evening's rest. So, thank you so much for coming out this evening and welcome to the district.
Mrs. Taylor, thank you for assembling your team for tonight. It's an all-star group. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, I think we can...
At this point, we are open to the public on any topic. Seeing no comments, I turn it back to you, Dr. Caputo and Mr. Harvier.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll take the first part, and Mr. Harvier and I will kind of double-team the presentation and the slides. So, this is our official budget hearing for the '25-'26 school year. And we'll begin with a little history of the timeline. We always start this year. It's an inclusive process. It's really a year-long process. This is... Most schools operate this way. We try to be totally transparent about that. Beginning in July of '24, we are already beginning budget preparations for the next school year. In between September and December, principals prepared school-based budgets. Input from all stakeholders, their teachers, their teams, the supervisors. In December, Mr. Harvier and I review the submitted budgets, make any changes that we need to. And then we begin an interesting process that goes right up until tonight, where we make the presentations to the board, first to the Finance Committee and then to the full board, right here in public, from our budget managers. We talk about transportation and buildings and grounds and athletics, and you heard the principals present, and special services and curriculum. On February 26th, we received the state aid information from Governor Murphy. March 11th, right here, we held our preliminary budget hearing, and the budget remains essentially the same. There's one change that we'll talk about that occurred in the last six weeks. And tonight, we're assembled here asking the board to make final approval at this final budget hearing. We start out the presentation with some highlights. We want the public and the board to be proud of what their funding goes towards every year. And we'll start with Metatchen High School. So, we recently celebrated our last class, our most recent class, Hall of Fame class of 2024. We're very proud of the AP Honor Roll, civil level, that shows excellent success and participation in the AP program. Many school-wide initiatives, including the implementation of our Lifeline Suicide Prevention Program. Many, many community outreach, you know, too many to list on here. But we're awfully proud of the... Two of them in particular, the Soccer for a Cause Charity Event and the Replenish Food Drive that we participate every year at the high school in. A number of academic highlights, including 10 commended scholars, five semley finalists, and five National Merit Scholarship finalists, as well as the excellent AP results, the AP Silver Award, the AP Access Award, and in 506 AP exams taken last spring, 84 of those, percent of those students received a score of three or higher, which is considered passing at a college level. And in so many athletics and co-curricular highlights that we've included here as well. At Edgar School, very proud of the '23-'24 Sustainable School Award. And we're awarded at three of our schools, and we're moving towards an award at Moss School as well for the first time. They also received the Sustainable Schools Grant, and there's a number of school-wide initiatives that the budget goes to support, including the Spring Musical and the Mental Health Ambassadors. Awfully proud of the school outreach program, including the Bulldog Briefs and the Replenish Drives and the always fun Old Dogs, Young Pups basketball game. As well as other schools, at the Edgar School, we participate in First Lego League, and we have students represented in our... You heard some of them tonight, in our Honors Orchestra Band and Jazz Ensembles. At Campbell School, some of the highlights for this year continued with their motto of children, families, and teachers, and I've listed that there. Additional school-wide initiatives this year, the Bulldog Buddies Program is a district... School-wide, district-wide social-emotional program, as well as awfully proud of the bi-monthly surveys that we're regularly collecting data from staff and parents to measure satisfaction and engagement. And the outreach, especially the food drives and the Campbell Three. And at Moss School, Ms. Espercolis, in her first year, still proud of the 2023 National School of Character and Promise Practicing Awards in two areas. This year, the school-wide initiatives and program, including the reading assessment tools and the foundational schools skills, as well as the math tools. And the additional community outreach is we thank our PTO, our programs. And we had an awesome Metatchen as America Birthday Celebration with our Dream Quilt gift that we presented to the mayor. And we have a spring project as well, where the PTO is sponsoring a mural, which we're really excited about. Our special ed focus areas this year were directed around three areas, specialized programs and related services, counseling and behavioral supports, and a particular literacy initiative with targeted services and PD and coaching and progress monitoring. At the next meeting, Dr. Herzog will do a full presentation on the mental health initiative. But following up on the November 2019 passage of the referendum by the public, we pledged to do annual updates as part of the budget process, as well as a separate standalone presentation. So, Dr. Herzog will talk about this in much more detail in a few weeks. But we look at areas around students, parents, and staff, and how to prevent, educate, and support our community. The components of the referendum included school psychologists, behavioral support, therapeutic programs, academic interventions, and clerical support. The referendum budget is listed on page 11, and it outlines the money that's dedicated to each of those areas, the biggest part being the therapeutic program, and then the school psychologist and the academic support. And our proposed budget in curriculum, now moving to that part, that includes curriculum writing and revisions, professional development. Systems management includes our systems like Lincoln and Frontline, and a professional development by district experts, where experts within our own district present internally. Moving to technology, this '25-'26 proposed budget includes one-to-one devices for rising third and rising ninth graders. And Mr. Thumann and his team have found savings through a multi-platform approach to workstations, changes in classroom management software, and a reduction in subscriptions that were underutilized. We also pledged, and we're really proud to talk about, our infrastructure. We know that behind the scenes, it's not sexy, you don't see that, but the strength of our infrastructure allows all this good schoolwork and the business operations to continue seamlessly. And we have 10 gigs across our network. Our switches are... And we have 10 gigs across our network. Our switches are linked at 10 gigs throughput. And the new construction that we're doing will maintain that standard. Our servers are recently upgraded. Our firewall was replaced in 2022. Our internet will be going to 5 gigs. Access points are rolling out older ones. New ones will be outfitted, especially in the new areas. We have a fiber backbone that's 10 gigs plus and 10 gigs between our buildings over our WAN links. I know some of what I just said, so it's good that I have it here. Our budget also incorporates our safety and security and around facilities. We continue our maintenance. We get compliments all the time on our buildings and athletic fields and that doesn't happen by accident. Mr. Harvier, Mr. Shanley and his team do a great job. Continued parking lot maintenance at all our buildings, HVAC upgrades, and roof repairs. Madam President, there's one big adjustment that the board was made aware of as it's part of our presentation. One change made to our preliminary budget is that $1.5 million was transferred from Capital Reserve to Fund 30. And that's made to supplement the referendum funds for potential unforeseen conditions so we can get this project over the finish line. And we're getting to that point. We can start to see the light at the end of tunnel and it's really exciting. You got a little tour, a little field trip we did before the meeting to see the new cafeteria in its office phase and it'll look even better when it's a new cafeteria for student use come December, January.
Absolutely. It looks great so far.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harvier to take us home now with the numbers parts of the budget.
And I just want to elaborate on this slide for a minute. There is no impact to the tax levy, to the tax increase. That's simply a transfer from our reserve account or our savings account into Fund 30, which accounts for the capital projects. The next couple of slides give an overview of the different funds. First one, first fund is Fund 10 and this is the major accounting fund that school district use. It accounts for all operating, operations of the daily activities of the district. Next fund is Fund 20 and this fund accounts for grants that are earmarked for a specific purpose. Examples are federal and state grants. The next slide is Fund 40. This fund simply accounts for the repayment of the debt. The money that's collected from the taxpayer to pay the debt goes into this fund and then we pay it out as it comes in. The next slide, this is summary appropriations for Fund 10. As you can see, the total appropriations are $54.3 million. Of that $54.3 million, about $39 million is salaries and health insurance. Education is obviously a labor-intensive field. That's why that number is so high. Next slide just, in a pie chart, shows the grouping of all the different appropriations. Next slide is the revenue from Fund 10. $45.5 million comes from the local tax levy. State aid is $3.3 million. We received an increase this year of 6%. Budgeted fund balance is $2.6 million. That's money we take from our reserves and put it in, put it into the budget for 25-26. Transportation revenue is $275,000. That is the, for the partial courtesy busing, the funds we collect from the parents. Next item is miscellaneous revenue of $376,000. Majority of that is for tuition from added district students, interest earned on our investments, and facility rentals. Next item is Medicaid reimbursement. That's $4,000. That went down from $30,000 the year before. Next item is the Fund 30 transfer. The accounting process shows this item as both a revenue and an appropriation. As we said before, there is no impact on the local tax levy. And then we're transferring, we're transferring from Capital Reserve $639,000 and that's going back out to Fund 40 to help reduce the amount of tax increase in Fund 40. Next slide just shows this in a pie chart, the breakdown of the revenues. State aid, just to break down the state aid, we received $2.7 million special education aid, $360,000 for our transportation aid, and $300,000 for categorical security aid for a total of $3.3 million. That's just the breakdown of our state aid. Tax impact for Fund 40, the total ratables is $1,997,000. The tax levy is $49.7 million. That's for Fund 10 and Fund 40. The tax rate per hundred is 4.53. School taxes on a house assessed at $211,143 is $9,567. That's an increase of $259. And the percent increase over 24-25 is 2.7%. And this is obviously school taxes only. Doesn't include the municipal portion or the county portion. Next slide is just a tax analysis of Fund 10 and Fund 40, the percent increase to the taxpayers since 2012, 2013. The average over those 14 years is 2.33%. And that's the percent increase to the taxpayer. And we call out a couple of items. In 1920, we had the mental health referendum. 22-23, we had the separate proposal for the operating costs as a result of the reorganization. And 24-25 was the first year we started paying a debt service. That's why there was a big spike in that year and now we're back to 2.7%. Every year, we try to find, you know, throughout the year, we try to find budget efficiencies where we can. I won't read all these, but examples are the integrated preschool program, all the special ed programs that we have in district. We think we can educate the students better in district. So wherever possible, we educate the special needs students in district. We have joint purchasing for natural gas and electricity. We have cooperative purchasing with other districts wherever it's possible. We just completed an energy audit. We plan on implementing some of those energy savings. We're also gonna, we're also, last night, the finance committee, the finance committee agreed to accept a grant from Sustainable New Jersey and the purpose of that grant is to develop an energy management plan for the district. We're very conscious of the increases in electricity costs and the heating costs. And we, we're going to do everything we can to minimize those costs in the future. And the next handouts, we've already went through those. That's just the detailed line item budget and the tax levy analysis. Any questions?
Alright, thank you. Our board member is going to return. And I believe I'm supposed to accept comment from the public.
Yes, there's a special section on there that all districts have to do and it's listed on our agenda for you, yes.
Alright, so, do I make a move?
I just want to acknowledge all the hard work of the administration, Mr. Harvier in particular, and just being mindful of the input from the finance committee and board members, trying to keep the rate of increase as low as possible. You know, given the fact that we are appreciative of the public support from the referendum and a cognizant of the impact that that had on taxes. At the same time, there's a lot of headwinds that we're going against here in terms of trying to keep that number under control. But at 2.7%, given everything going on in the world, is a, quite a reasonable number, as best as we could do, I think. So, we appreciate all the hard work there.
Thank you for that commentary, Mr. Glassberg. I think it is indeed illustrative of how good stewards we are of the public funds in seeking these savings where we can find them and being responsible so that we can come in at a 2.7% increase. So, thank you for that. Colleagues, comments, questions? Kudos. I think it's universal kudos here. Alright, so let me make sure I do this officially correctly. So, I move to open the public hearing on the budget. Is there a second? Mr. Suss. Giving adequate time for someone to come running in in case they really just had that burning question. Alright, seeing no public, we am going to also move to close the public hearing on the budget for the 25-26 year. Is there a second? Mr. Bott. Alright, now, Dr. Caputo.
Yes.
Back to you.
I'll give Brandon a chance to switch me up and then I will presenting the district slides from the, yeah, from the podium.
Okay. Brandon's getting the steps in today, Mr. Ullig. Alright. Dun dun dun.
Yeah, I sent it to both of them, yeah. I could send it again. I have my email. I sent it to you and Chris Nedzie.
Tell some quick jokes.
Would y'all like me to play some smooth jazz?
Smooth jazz, yeah.
I could pull up some quick jazz, very quickly.
What I could do without the slides, I mean, I have my copy, so I'll just do that.
I mean, it'll be posted on the board website, so people can't see it.
It's on the website and on school board, both public.
Awesome. So, the goals presentation, Dr. Johnson Marcus, is on the website. So, those following along, they can find that right now. Ms. Aliyevich, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, okay. So, it's on the, it's on the website now?
You could even pull it up there.
We could, but I think to keep the meeting moving, I'll do it from here.
Alright.
Alright, so, the update is our second of three updates. Every year, we've kind of fallen into a rhythm where I give a presentation around Thanksgiving and right around spring break, a little later this year. So, but it's still our April 25 update. This is our 24-25 district goals. We'll do one final update, which will be second meeting in June, where we summarized all the work this year and we've already begun to look at the goals for next year as we're still working on this year, so. The goals this year are organized around the school empowerment network's quality schools. Five items, and if you're following along on the website, five areas which I'll talk about in each of the focus areas. So, focus area one says that quality schools employ rigorous, engaging, and coherent curriculum, offer effective instruction that yields high-quality work, and use curricular-aligned assessments that inform instruction. Our goal this year was specifically around implementing rigorous curriculum, effective pedagogy, and assessments that drive instruction and supports to maximize student learning. We had several key actions around revised curriculum guides and interdisciplinary connections, AI plan and policy, and facilitating student discourse and maximizing instructional time. On, your student on engagement. So, our mean score, so as everyone remembers, it's a slide on here as well. But we have a self-designed one-to-five scale. That scale is self-grown, but it goes from a one, which means we really didn't get it accomplished, all the way up to a five is we did it well and it had a major impact on student outcomes. Five's a really hard target and some of these goals, items, we probably can't even reach a five. I'm okay with that. We have really aggressive goals and our folks do a great job. So, district focus area one, the mean score was 3.58. With the range, all the scores were in the three to four range. These are all as of the end of March. The final evaluation will include September through June. And I picked a piece of evidence to support that score. At Moss, Ms. Espercolis shared the Community Kindness Project and many of you saw those. Those are positive messages on coffee sleeves that were for the downtown businesses and that incorporated social, emotional learning, writing, art, and community service. At Campbell, the work around artificial intelligence, the K5 English Language Arts Teams, leads that they've had PD on using different AI tools for curriculum, lessons, and other resources. At Edgar, revising the benchmarks and the common writing assignments. And at the high school, the implementation of the Lifelines Program, which by the way is happening at Edgar as well, grade six, nine, and 11, that's infused into our health curriculum during the third marking period. And there was much collaboration, stakeholder input around the lesson design and the implementation program on this highly important program. Alright, moving on to the second area. The second area says quality schools have a clear philosophy and intentional structures for a positive equitable school culture and support culture of learning that includes high expectations. Our goal this year is to create a positive learning environment that supports high expectations. We have a number of key actions, including taking the recommendations from the Parents' Partners Forum, looking at the, to enhance our systems of communication on student progress, mobilizing students by leveraging their co-curricular experiences, and emphasizing character ed. Focus area two is our highest, a mean score of 3.81. Again, a range of, all the scores were between three and four. At Moss, the Dreams Quilt, I mentioned it before, students are engaged in self-awareness, self-reflection, and goal-setting as they imagine their role in a future Matuchan in 2050. Campbell, the monthly Bulldog Initiative, Bulldog Buddy Initiative, which I talked about earlier. The Edgar example was the active social media presence, sharing activities at Edgar. That was a result of the Parents' Partners Forum telling us they needed more of that. And at the high school, and this is also going on at Edgar as well, they have the Trusted Adult Pins where adults at Edgar and high school wear those on their lanyards so that students recognize individuals with whom they can talk. Focus area three says quality schools show clear alignment and intention between resource allocation and the mission, vision, and goals. This year, looking at dedicated time, resources, and expertise combined with stakeholder input to analyze many indicators of success. So, we're looking at boosting achievement in tested areas and we listed some specifics, reviewing accountability data, aligning instructional approaches through collaboration, and in various community stakeholder input surveys. Our mean score was 3.75 and of all five areas, district focus area three showed the biggest increase between the Thanksgiving and spring break updates. Evidence here is at Moss, the Poor Print Monthly Community Newsletter focuses on the impact of absenteeism with an article that's entitled "Attendance Matters." At Campbell, looking at SLA and benchmark data, those reflect pre-COVID levels, which is not the case in all districts. Eighth grade, I mean, at Edgar, the eighth grade math teachers are collaborating with the ninth grade math teachers for articulation. Something that we hope happens frequently, but we made a particular, oh, great. We, a particular effort this year for that articulation to make the smoothest transition between eighth and ninth. And at the high schools, you can see AP teacher training to stay current on AP course content and expectations, high expectations for students and teachers. And we hope that pays off in a couple of weeks as our students embark on their AP tests for this year. District area four, which now you can see behind me on the screen, quality schools, thank you Brandon, quality schools have effective systems to attract, develop, and evaluate staff and leverage professional collaborations to improve outcomes. Our particular goal is to enhance teacher support using collaborative structures and encourage distributed leadership to further our district priorities. The key actions talked about our school leadership teams, administrator training on equitable hiring practices, a statement of commitment about a high-performing inclusive organization, formalizing and communicating our district priorities, which Dr. Herzog has done so much to compile those, and to update our new teacher orientation in our new Teacher Academy series to align with those current district priorities. I think we still have an opportunity for growth here in the last couple, the last two and a half months from March 30th to the end of the year, but our mean score was just below three. It was our lowest because we have a range of ones, twos, threes, and fours. And we hope to make some gains in those ones and twos over these next couple of months. At Moss, we've implemented the information learned from this practice, the Equitable Hiring PD, in order to hire some of the new teachers that you've seen over the last several meetings. At Campbell, the collaboration around a more defined tiered systems of support model, as well as building usage, building use occurs through the SLT subcommittees. At Edgar, the school leadership team continues to reflect on the character ed program and how, programs and how to improve them. And the next effort at the high school will be academic integrity and intellectual property, assisting students on learning how to ensure they're given credit for information that they find in their very sources. And focus area five. And focus area five, quality schools have effective structures to evaluate decisions and to monitor and accelerate student growth. Our goal is to support student mental health and wellness by enhancing the tiered systems of support to remove barriers to student achievement. Our actions include the aforementioned Lifelines Trilogy as a comprehensive suicide prevention program, educating staff and students on wellness, impact of social media. Think we're doing okay, but I think there's still room there. Including parent representation on our district mental health leadership team, important step this year. Providing PD for our INRS and 504 teams on various tiered interventions. And then finally, coordinating and communicating steps towards prevention intervention and efforts to modify behavior when responding to HIBs. Our mean score is 3.24. We have a wide range of ones, twos, threes, and fours. Mostly threes and fours, as you can tell from the average. At Moss, staff training, understanding the impact of trauma and mental health concerns on children, supporting strategies for them. At Campbell, morning meeting content that helps students identify strengths for managing emotions and social situations. At Edgar, through prevention, through the No Place For Hate lessons developed with collaboration with the Student Support Services Team. And at the high school, the staff book discussion on digital madness, how social media is driving our mental health crisis, and how to restore sanity. So those are our five areas. The next slide talks about how these connect. We want to still stay tethered to ASAD's Whole Child Tenets, and in the June meeting, I'll have more on that with scores within the, the tenets of healthy, safe, engaged, supportive, challenged, and sustainable. And then finally, our, our rubric that I talked about before talks about our scoring system, how we get to those averages that I talked about. One means we didn't do it, or there are circumstances preventing us from accomplishing it. Two means we made some progress that was minimal or not yet at the student level. Three means we've made good progress, it's not completed, or it's limited evidence of student impact. Four, in some cases, that may be the highest that we can get, means we did it well, and there's some evidence of impact at student level. And five, which, which is our ultimate goal, means we did the goal statement well, and there's significant evidence at the student level. It's really high bar, but we're comfortable, because the board, you've made it comfortable for us to maybe not always be able to hit a five in certain areas. So that's our goals update. We'll have another one summarizing the entire year come at the end of June. But I'm happy to take any questions tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Caputo. Questions from the board. Mr. Suss.
Dr. Caputo, great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Glad you got it up there.
Thank you, Brandon, for that.
Kudos to the staff getting it up there. Question on focus area number three, particular D, we're talking about surveys. So this is, one of the surveys is the climate survey?
Yes.
What's this, that's gone out to the parent? What's the status of that in terms of, like, hitting the parents and the students at the various schools and stuff?
Yeah, so the New Jersey Climate Survey, it's the NJSCI, they're calling it New Jersey Sky now, but it's a school climate improvement survey. We are a pilot district. Mr. Cohen brought that to us a number of years ago. We were one of the few districts in the, the state where able to pilot it, and we use that data. So we've done that survey, I think, twice before. This year, it's, it's much more widely available and open, and it's been encouraged by the commissioner. So we're really excited. In fact, I just quickly audited the principals today at our meeting, and we've had some of the highest end numbers returning. I'm not sure if all the surveys are completed yet, but we have some really good initial data. I haven't seen it myself, I have access to it, but I allow the principals and their, their teams to review that first. And it will be, they'll be sharing out some of that data with their, with their advisory boards and probably through their newsletters as well. So in some cases, we are, we're, um, we're surveying students, in some cases, parents and staff as well at all the schools.
So just for the parents that might have missed it, is, is it possible, I mean, do you know, I mean, I know each principal, we talked about this, each principal kind of does it a little bit differently on how they, and actually even the timing, I think, is.
The timing was pretty coordinated this year. Dr. Herzog really coordinated with our principals that they all did it within the same window this year.
So is it done?
The survey is either done or really close to done.
So, parents, hopefully you'll find it, so.
Yeah, we made multiple, multiple outreaches. Some folks don't want to do it, I understand, but we have really good end numbers that we're happy with. We certainly want to hear from everybody, but thank you for those folks that complete, and those students and, and staff that completed the survey as well for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Caputo and Mr. Suss for raising that issue. Perhaps if it's still open, some parents are like, oh, let me get it done now. All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bott.
Thank you, Dr. Caputo. I think great presentation. I always love the way you represent the whole child with that grid across the focus areas. A question on focus area number four. One, does this, so two-part question. One, I know you all have put a lot of emphasis and effort in this over the past year to get creative. Do these numbers reflect the results of that, or is it too early? And part two, what can the board do to support you in focus area four?
Thank you. Great question. You must have been listening into our principals' meeting today, because the principals are really, really proud of the work. But when they look at the criteria that we've, I've given them to score themselves, they don't necessarily see the, the, the significant student impact yet. And, and one principal said, boy, this would be one goal that'd be great if we could measure in two or three years. So I'm okay with it where we are, but I know that there's hard work that goes into this. Our counselors, our child study teams, our clinicians, our teachers, our principals. Maybe the most important thing that we do, and I appreciate the offer that the board brings. I think certainly supporting and putting the referendum forward in 2019 was huge. Continuing to keep it on the, the front burner by talking about it, I think is really critical, so I thank you for that. Thank you for letting me bring Dr. Herzog. I think at the next meeting, right, Jen? I think she's presenting at the, the May 13th meeting, I think. So thank you for allowing me to bring her and talk about that. You, we knew really early on that, and I remember saying this pre-COVID, when it was asked in that lead-up to the, the vote, that, you know, 50 years ago, if you had asked about nurses in schools, folks would have said, go see your doctor if you're sick. Well, we're gonna have nurses in schools, and now, obviously, our school nurses are integral staff members. And I said at that time, within a decade, I'm predicting that mental health conditions, I remember saying this in this room, mental health conditions are gonna be regular parts of school districts. Obviously, we didn't know the crisis with COVID and the acceleration that happened with that. Not even six years, you know, not even five years later after COVID. And mental health conditions are either embedded in every school or school employees in every school. Obviously, we participate with, and partner with ESS and Rutgers and Wellspring to bring those services here as well as our own staff. So, yeah, I think you can continue to ask me questions about it. Ask Dr. Herzog questions when she presents a whole presentation on that. And helping us keep it on the front burner is, is really, really important. It's nothing more important than the mental health of our staff and especially our students.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Bott, and for those responses. Dr. Caputo, Mr. Glassberg, I'm sensing a question? No? All right. Ms. Galen.
Thank you for the presentation.
Really appreciate all of the information. One of the things that I really loved seeing in here was the grade-level articulation that was mentioned for eighth transitioning into ninth. I think that's so important for the student experience. And I think kind of a common thread that you've got tied through all of the focus areas and certainly just a theme in, in your, in the district values is the whole child. So like, following that child's experience across grade levels. And I'm wondering if there are gonna be continued opportunities for other grade-level articulations that maybe it's not just when they transition schools, but between grade levels. So, you know, sometimes second to third can be a big jump for kids. Sometimes sixth to seventh can be a big jump for, for kids. It's not just transitioning for, out of Campbell into Edgar, or out of Edgar and into the high school. And I'm wondering if there's any conversation about continuing that in an intentional way for next year to continue to look at the student journey and what it's like in skills and content and work expectations from year to year. I see departmental, but just, you know, also across grade levels.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. I just chose this one as one of the examples, as, you know, when the principals shared how it fits, and it certainly was evidence of the score, the three or the four that they had in that area, because it definitely has an impact on students. Yet we're doing a lot of that, and maybe I can, in a future meeting, maybe summarize some of those. We've done some really neat things this year, like, for example, the fifth-grade teachers have joined a Campbell staff meeting this year to kind of get that sense of what that will be like. Mrs. Asper Colas included first and second-grade teachers on committees hiring from Moss staff this year. So there's lots of stuff like that, and maybe I could do a, a quick summary of that at a future board meeting. Great ideas.
Maybe we could talk about it a little bit in curriculum, too. I don't know, like, something like that.
We'll do that first. Yep, great idea. If that's all right. We'll talk to Mr. Dersflinger, but it sounds like something would be right up his alley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Spigner.
Yes, just wanted to underscore how informative and enlightening this presentation always is. So kudos Vince and everyone else who supported this. And I just wanted to focus on, in on focus area number five, and I believe maybe something you said earlier might have, might give this explanation, but it was the example for the MHS with the staff discussion on digital madness, and I think so appropriate for that. But would that also be other resources as well at the Edgar level, similar discussions, et cetera?
Yes. So Mr. Prowski's doing that with a book club for the staff. But socially, as we talked about earlier, I just chose, I just chose some evidence, but each principal gives me extensive evidence for each area of the, those key action areas for each of their schools. So yes, those things are happening at Edgar, and believe it or not, even Campbell School. And we were saying today at the principals' meeting, because we reviewed this presentation at the principals' meeting today. And I think, maybe knock on wood, I think I did that at the meeting, but I feel like I'm hearing some of my colleagues talk about more and more significant social media issues. We still have ours, but I think, I think our students are starting to get the message. I know our parents, just because the, the questions they ask and the kind of feedback that we're getting that they're listening. And I think maybe we're contained in the Wild West a little bit more than maybe in the past. Now, we still have our issues, we still have work to do, but we're gonna keep our, our, our finger on this going into next year as well, because the principals believe it's working, and they want to kind of tamp it down even more because it is the Wild West out there, and our students are hit with a fire hose of information. I, I've said this before, but Maurice Elias, who's a professor at Rutgers, and we've used him here in district, a stat that he quoted is that when we grew up, 90% of the information that we, we learned or we were exposed to came through a trusted adult. You know, clergy member, a parent, a teacher, a coach. Now it's the opposite. 90% of the information that our, our children now are exposed to comes through sometimes unfiltered, uncensored, unadult-checked sources, and that's scary. And so we want to control what we control. We want to make our parents as empowered as, with tools and confidence that they need, so we're gonna keep our finger on that. So great question. I'm glad you asked about that.
Okay, great. Thanks. And I think that's a learning curve for everyone, all the stakeholders anyway, so we're moving in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Spigner and Dr. Caputo. Any other questions on the district goals update? All right, wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Caputo.
Thank you. We'll be back in late June with the final wrap-up for the 24, 25 year.
Wonderful.
And in August with the 25, 26 goals.
Perfect. And I am sure it will also engender lots of questions and commentary, because it is really great to kind of take a look at the way in which we are articulating our values across the district. Thank you so much. Now we turn to reports. I have no report this evening, and I imagine after that blockbuster presentation.
I'm tired today, so I have nothing either, myself either.
I'd imagine not. So we'll start down at the right-hand side of the table, my right of the table, alphabetically, with Mr. Bott.
Equity did not meet, we will be meeting in May.
Thank you so much. Oh, it's supposed to be alphabetically Mr. Dersflinger, but he is not here, so I shall do curriculum quickly. Just give me a second. Curriculum committee met on the 22nd of April. And we heard from the Social Emotional Character Development Committee, the SECD Committee. Ms. Kirshner, Vice Principal at Campbell, provided an overview of the plans for the year with the focus on supporting staff with monthly themes that include classroom presentation activities designed to promote social and emotional learning. Another highlight, I think this is the third mention during this meeting of the Bulldog Buddies Program at Campbell, where third-grade students mentor first graders and fourth-grade students mentor second graders. This is an initiative that fosters leadership and positive peer relationships among our students. Ms. Kirshner also talked about activities recognizing International SEL Day and shared resources being distributed across the district to support classroom implementation in terms of our social, emotional learning. She also highlighted various district-wide initiatives that align with and support the mission. We also heard directly from Dr. Herzog about the Comprehensive Science Action Plan for grades six through eight. And with the, under the guidance of Ms. Limerick, the secondary STEM department is reviewing science instruction across six through eight. They are focused on continuing to empower our students through high-quality instruction and science mathematics, and of course, 21st century skills. Analyzing the effectiveness of the current curriculum and researching programs in other districts, surveying stakeholders, et cetera, to ensure that we can implement new instructional materials that align with the district's mission, vision, and next-generation science standards. We also, Dr. Herzog also shared the Metatchin Public Schools Summer Institute, which includes school transition programs, a variety of virtual, in-person, college, AP, and prep, AP prep courses, as well as limited sections of the Metatchin Star Academy to support multilingual learners in the primary grades and address potential summer learning loss. Another topic we covered were portfolio approvals for students who were unable to meet the graduation requirement. This is an alternative pathway to demonstrate academic proficiency and readiness for graduation. This was done to ensure that students have multiple opportunities to showcase their learning and to achieve their diploma. Dr. Herzog is also collaborating to review the mental health services provided, to identify current and projected needs for our students with respect to mental health. And we are committed, of course, to continuing to support our students' mental health needs and ensure that they have the adequate level of services accessible to those who need them. And lastly, the AP Computer Science A curriculum has been updated by College Board and now aligned with the content of Honors Computer Programming in Java. As a result, students enrolled in Honors course will automatically be placed in AP Computer Science A. Current schedules will be updated accordingly. Parents who do not want their child to take the AP course must contact the school to request a schedule change. The next meeting is scheduled for May 20th, and that is it for curriculum. And next up, I believe we have Mr. Glassberg with an exciting construction update.
Are you sure?
I, I, I believe in you. I believe in you.
So we met last night for a public committee meeting. I'll start with sort of the big picture, then dig down into some of the details. So school, of course, is going to be starting on time, September, at the beginning of September, as per the calendar that we passed, so there's nothing about construction that's in the way of, of that. Air conditioning is on track for September-ish at all of the schools, September, October. In the beginning, we ask for your patience, as there might be different particular issues when there's new equipment, you know, getting things just right. But we're on track for getting all of that in and hopefully functioning well. Full-day kindergarten, as we've previously discussed, is fully on track to start in September as well. And as a reminder, for those of you who may not have tuned in to all of the meetings, the grade realignment is not for this coming school year, but for the following school year. Here's some more detail from that meeting. At the high school, the gym portion is not expected to be completed until late December. Approximately at that range. We'll update you from meeting to meeting. Cafeteria is expected to be done this, this week and is ready for the Board of Ed offices to move into there, so that their current office space can be turned into the space needed for kindergarten. At the high school, the steel is complete, the masonry is well underway. Cafeteria, final inspections are happening. Outside work is continuing. At Campbell, the completion of the entire project, including the HVAC and playgrounds, by the beginning of the school year. Much of the landscaping is complete. The paving of the court and installation of the playground should be complete in the summertime. And then some new electrical going in over the summer. And after that, then we're looking at leveling the ballfield out towards the back, which was not part of the referendum project, but it's something that we know that there were, that there was a need for as well. At Edgar, the brickwork is complete, much of the drywall is complete. The nurses' suite has been removed. has been removed, a new suite is in progress, switchgear is arriving after the summer ends there, but there will be a temporary electrical hook up at the beginning of the year, which allows there to be the functioning air conditioning. At Moss, we're on track for full-day kindergarten, insulation is going in, brick veneer will follow, and then windows, much of the wiring is complete, the infrastructure is in for the new electrical service. All right, and then there was no, there were no additional comments from the public during that portion. During the closed session of the meeting, we reviewed the overall budget, the remaining funds that we're managing, possible change orders. We discussed potential conversations with the contractors and with our construction management company over different communication issues and soil testing as well. And the next meeting is on May 19th. And for those of you who want to attend the next public meeting, the next public construction meeting is on June 16th, and that's at 7:00 PM in the Metuchen High School library. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Glassberg. Ms. Colleen, extracurricular.
Thank you, extracurricular met last night. We had a great presentation by Ms. Limerick and Ms. Cotto from the Sustainability Committee. They're really leading some excellent work over there. That committee is the only one in our, in our leadership team that includes a student on the committee, which is very exciting. We realized last night, along with a building principal, some other administrators, and then, and then teachers, they've got a great crew working together to support the district action of creating more sustainable district altogether. We reviewed their three different goals for the year and the pieces of, or projects that they have undergone to achieve their goals. They're looking to support district actions toward building a more sustainable district, particularly ones that can be applied to Sustainable Jersey Certification for the benefit of all schools in the district. Their second goal is to support schools and sustainability efforts, particularly as they seek to complete actions for Sustainable Jersey Certification. And then their third goal is to continue and to foster and build community partnerships focused on sustainability efforts. And they've just done a tremendous amount of work in all three of these areas, and a lot to be proud of. We see it in coming up with guidelines for how to purchase paper that is recycled and find funding to help, help with that, to inviting high school, inviting a high school student member to serve on their committee and get other, other individuals from the district involved. And they're looking at community partnerships, so they're working with the Metuchen Environmental Commission and the Shade Tree Commission, they're, they're working with a lot of local people in town to enhance what they're able to do there. I should mention that in partnership with the Metuchen Environmental Commission, they will be present with the Metuchen Green Fair on August 17th this summer. So they really are doing a lot to enhance sustainability efforts in the school and then within our community, which is wonderful. After, after that presentation, we went back to regular business. We talked about the sport offerings that we have at the high school level and the, and specifically mentioning volleyball as a sport of interest that had come up. And decided, kind of acknowledged at this point that we don't have funds to support a new team, but that if there were any inquiries or interests, they should be directed to the athletic director, so that he was aware of the interest for the sport. We talked about band camp, specifically a concern about, inquiry about, you know, rising eighth graders going to band camp and why we include rising eighth graders in activities with high school students, where we don't see that in other avenues. We don't see it in sports, we don't see it in other extracurriculars, and we kind of discussed that for a little while. We talked about summer camps, particularly because the township uses a lot of school buildings typically to house summer camp options for students, and with the construction, this is increasingly difficult. Dr. Caputo shared that his default answer is always yes for any time the, the district is asked for that kind of partnership. Specifically, rec basketball camps were mentioned, and turns out that today I saw a posting that rec basketball camp will be going on in the summer. So that was fantastic to see that the partnership is successfully moving forward there. Then we discussed some jazz band rankings and closed out with spring records, and that was the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be May 19th at 9:00 PM.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Colleen. I really always enjoy hearing about the partnerships, spreading our knowledge to the community as well with the sustainability efforts, so it's always lovely to hear that.
That's important work.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Dr. Spigner, can you tell us what's up with the policy?
So we have not met, but we are scheduled to meet on the 17th of June with the co-chairs of the district and to review possibly some policies that's already, I guess, being reviewed, but we'll, we have some time and review it then, so we'll be meeting on the 17th of June.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Mr. Suss, finance.
Yes, finance met last night. We talked about the fiscal year 25-26 budget, which we had the presentation earlier and moved forward on. We talked about some end-of-year purchases for the 25, 2025 budget. As actually Mr. Harvey mentioned as part of his presentation, we talked about the energy management grant and that we're looking at. Transportation, always a favorite topic, we settled on the price of busing for next year at 610, and we will not be allowing partial payments. We also, per state policy, there's a new policy where we have to actually have tuition rates, we talked about that, policy 5111, that the policy committee also talked about that. And we talked about, the district has engaged a grant writer and how the grant writer works, how they look for grants, how we can engage them. I think it's going to be great, because, you know, having them, looking at all the grants that are available, understanding our school district, applying for them, and there's a lot out there, so hopefully it'll pay dividends.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Oh, and the next meeting is May 19th.
Thank you, all right. Excellent, are there any questions or comments on any of the reports? All right, at this time I will ask if there is any old business for the board. Any new business? Fantastic, at this time I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of April 8th, 2025, special business meeting one, special business meeting two, as well as the board meeting. Is there a sec? Okay, Mr. Bott seconded. Rule call, please. This is Eliyevich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Abstain.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Abstain.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. At this time, the meeting is open to the public, but seeing none, I will expeditiously close this section of the meeting. Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move personnel items A1 through 8. Is there, Mr. Glassberg is seconding, is there, bleh, what am I saying? Is it comments or questions before the?
You get a, no, you get a second, then you ask for comments.
Sorry, listen, y'all, it's 9:18, okay? I was doing well.
That's late for you.
Exactly. Comments or questions, and I want to acknowledge that there is.
I'm going to have something.
You're going to have something. All right, comments or questions on any of the personnel items, board members? Splendourous, now we do.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic.
Madam President, as you alluded to, in item six, the board just accepted the retirement of Deborah Fenden. Debbie has been with the Metuchen School District for 20 years as the Business Administrator's Administrative Assistant. She grew up right here in Metuchen, she graduated from Metuchen High School. Debbie loves Bruce and the shore and enjoys traveling, and we wish her a very happy and healthy retirement.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Congratulations on your retirement and best wishes to you on your next adventure.
I mean, did cleaning out Mr. Harvey's office, did that push her over the edge?
I don't know why he gives you such a hard time, Mr. Harvey. All right, turning to you, Ashley, Mr. Suss, for the finance items.
I'd like to move items B1 through B4, is listed on the agenda.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Cheatham, any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, just, just for emphasis, the board just accepted a number three there, the adoption of the school district budget, so thank you for your, your support and effort throughout this multi-month process.
Wonderful, thank you for pointing that out, that's important for folks to know at home. All right, Dr. Spigner, policy.
I'd like to move items one through two on the agenda, is listed, please.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Glassberg, any questions or comments? Rule call, please, Ms. Eliyevich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I will move the curriculum items D1 through 5. Could I get a second, please? Mr. Suss, any questions or comments about the curriculum item?
Only that I'm pleased to see that we are disposing of science textbooks that date back to 1998.
Always a nice thing to see, thank you, Ms. Colleen.
Is your name in one of those textbooks?
Any other questions or comments? All right, rule call, please, Ms. Eliyevich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, the meeting is open to the public, but at this time I don't see anyone other than us here, so I will close the section. Ms. Cheatham, it is time for announcements.
I promise to be brief.
All right, no pressure.
Just a couple quick updates on this Friday, just a reminder that the Metuchen Parent Teacher Council Spring fundraiser, Rock and Raise, is still scheduled to occur at JR's Pub on Friday, May 2nd, again at 7:00 PM. Tickets are still on sale, colleagues, I see colleagues, parents can refer to the Friday Three for more information, and there's also information about it, I believe, in the Bulldog Race as well. Also on Friday, just a note for everybody to pay attention to the roads, because it is, May 2nd is the Bulldog Bike Brigade, so you'll have a lot of elementary school-aged children riding to school on their bikes. It will be an organized event by staff, community members, and support from the Metuchen Police Department, so if Friday's a little slow around town, that's the reason why, so please exercise caution out there on the roads. And then finally, next week is Campbell Elementary School and Moss Staff Appreciation Month, so kudos to all of our staff next week and every week for everything that they do, just want to flag that as well. And then last but not least, our next meeting is May 13th.
Wonderful, thank you, Mrs. Cheatham, I appreciate that. At this time, I would like to move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Bott, all in favor? The motion carries, have a good night, folks.